Good morning, we call the order to New Kent County Board of Supervisors, April seventeenth, work session. We ask for the roll call, please.
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
All right, before we start, we have a moment of prayer. Father God, we come to you in sweet and most precious name of Jesus. We come this morning, Father, just to ask you to be present among the decisions that will be made. We ask that you will clear hearts and minds. We ask for a spirit of unity, Father God, and we ask that you, as always, will be the head of every decision that is made for the best interest of this entire county. Lord God, we love you, we bless your name, we pray for those that are affected by this unknown virus, dear Lord, and we pray for those families that are going through moments of bereavement. These in all blessings we have, in your awesome and mighty name sake, amen. At this time, we will have the new elementary school financing discussion. Before I say that, one thing that I want to be very clear on, I guess I wasn't clear the other night, so I want to be very clear on, was that I didn't talk enough. First time I've ever been accused of that. But we indeed understand the need for a elementary school, and we know that, and we understood that need years before, because my first year on the board, it was my understanding that we had already started saving and setting aside for an elementary school, and have been good stewards of doing that ever since 2014. So as this discussion is opened by Mr. Hathaway, the floor will be open for the board members for discussion and questions. Mr. Hathaway, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Regarding item one, new elementary school financing discussion, I would also like to, I guess, recap the action that was being considered on Monday night. There appears to be some confusion amongst the public as to whether or not what was being considered was whether or not to move forward with the elementary school. That was not the item being considered Monday night. What was being considered was whether or not to participate in a particular financing program called the Virginia Public School Authority Pool, Spring Pool Financing Program. That was the action that was discussed, I believe, as Mrs. Page just mentioned, there is still a very strong commitment to move forward with the elementary school project, but due to the economy and the rules of the program, we just felt it wasn't the best time. And that was not the best program and financing tool to use at this time. And I believe there is a motion that the board would like to make.
Yes, Mr. Hathaway, Madam Chair, I think this entire board knows that there's definitely a need for elementary school in this board, and the previous boards have been saving for years for this elementary school and its need. So to clear up our meeting from last Monday, I do have a motion. So, Madam Chair, I move to defer action on Resolution R-15-20, which would have authorized the county participation in the spring borrowing pool of the Virginia Public School Authority Financing Program. This proposed deferment is due to the fragile state of our current economy due to the coronavirus, unpredictable interest rates for long-term borrowings, and participation requirements for the program. I further move that the Board of Supervisors consider participation in the Virginia Public School Authority Pool during the fall application cycle or bank financing within the next six months. Also, the New Kent County Board of Supervisors recognizes the need for the construction of a new elementary school, and that providing high-quality education to students within our community is a priority. We will continue to work with the school board over the next six months to make the best decision for our residents for this county.
You heard the motion, is any discussion?
I know there was some confusion the other night, I was actually somewhat confused my own self. I guess my question with Mr. Evelyn's motion is, are we going to make a decision in six months to start, or to how we're going to finance? Because if we're going to wait six months to come back and say, let's wait six more months, I can't go with that. I think now is really the time, as some people know how I feel about this, that we should be voting right now on the financing and to get started, how we can get started now. I know the economy, I talked to Mr. Clark yesterday, and to try to get some comparisons from where we stand right now in the county, as we did a year ago, as far as meals tax revenues, sales tax revenues, but we can't make that comparison, because those sales tax numbers don't come back to us until about two months later. So we really can't make a comparison to say that our economy is hurting right now here in New Kent County. I just, that clarification, if we're going to get started within six months, I'll go along with that motion, but if we're going to come back in six months to vote again to decide, I think this is not the right, I think the right time now is to go ahead and vote now on the financing to get started, because the next six months we wait, six months later, we could wait. I've gotten a lot of emails, I'm sure as the rest of this board has, in the past four days, and one of the emails I got, a lady said, and her email was, you know, six months could become three years. And I kind of laughed at, when I read that email, and then after I thought about it, and I was like, you know what, she's right. This could go on every six months. So when do we decide, when is the right time? I think we need to do it now. So, Mr. Evelyn, I'll ask you to clarify that motion to me for sure, that we're going to start and not put off for six months, and then take another vote, decide whether then we will wait another six months at that time. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Tiller, my motion says within six months, but it does not say we will do, you know, construction within six months. I don't know if there's enough support on the board to do what you're asking for right now, to pass it today for financing on a school, but I do think within, hopefully in two months, things will look a little better, it'll give us the opportunity to look at bank financing in two months, if things turn around and people go back, go back to work. I think our citizens of the county will feel a lot better about moving forward with the school. I mean, for myself, I know about, and I've spoken with Mr. Steers, and he knows it very well, too, I've spoken about eight people in the last week that have filed for unemployment in New Kent, so, I mean, it's hitting home to everybody, and I just think in two or three months, hopefully things will look better, people will be going back to work, and I believe the interest rates for bank financing will be really, you know, I do still think they're going to be really good. That gives us the opportunity within two to, within two to six months to move forward, and working with schools, and I think Superintendent Nichols and Chairman Harding are both here tonight, they might be looking at some opportunities where they could save some costs in the school as well, and working with, with our board to move forward, because we all know it's definitely a need. We have over 700 kids in both elementary schools, so it's not a question of if, it's a question, you know, when.
Madam Chair? I can go along with the, the six-month timeframe that we're looking at, but I don't know that we should be committing to an action within six months. As everybody knows, our schools are all closed, our churches are all closed, most businesses are closed or dramatically reduced in their operation. I'm one of those essential people, so I get to drive around a lot, and the roads are empty. Twenty-two million Americans have lost their jobs so far in the last month. Unemployment in Virginia went from in the low twos to now, today, over nine percent in a month. Our governor has us on a stay-at-home order right now through the 10th of June. We still have over six weeks to go before that's lifted. So there's an awful lot of question about what our economy is going to look like, and for us to think that this is going to be over in two months, I think is unrealistic. I'm, I'm not a negative person, I'm trying to be a realistic person and take a look at what the real economy is going to be. I know we need the school, and I have every desire to build it, but I think we also have a responsibility to continue to be fiscally conservative in this county. That's the way things have been done, and it's, it's definitely served us well. This isn't the first hard time that we've gone through, but this is definitely a bigger test than any of us has ever taken, and I think it would be very prudent for us to pause for six months and review at that time. That's, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steers?
If you guys remember, I was the supervisor first mentioned to delay going forward with the construction of the school, and I still feel that way today. And we, we don't know what this economy is going to look like in two months or six months, but I'll tell you, I was hitting close to me. My wife has been at her job for 32 years, and she was just given notice that she will get a package offered to her, and she has till Sunday to decide to take it. If she doesn't, then she will be fired. If she takes it, she will go from working with, for five lawyers to working for as many as 15, and her salary will be cut 50%. So this is not the time to be committing ourselves to $38 million. I agree with Mr. Evelyn, I think if we delay this for six months, we'll work with the board. We make no commitment that in six months, we're going to borrow the money, or we're going to start building, or whatever. We just have to, you know, walk through this together. Believe me, we know we need the school, or we wouldn't have started saving for, three or four years ago. And, you know, someone said, well, Ron Steers doesn't really care about our kids, you know, how false can that be? In the past 20 years in my photography business, I used to photograph all the Little League teams in the county, through Parks and Rec, T-ball, baseball, all of it. And I would always tell the coaches that if you have a student, one of your players whose parents really can't afford the pictures, let me know. And on picture day, when we handed out pictures, every kid got a picture, one way or another. So I love the kids. When Ms. Jones was the principal of the high school, we had many high school seniors that couldn't even afford to be in, in the yearbook. And I would come to the school, set up a portable studio, and photograph 20 to 30 kids, charge the school nothing, charge the students nothing, charge the parents nothing, just so these kids could be in the yearbook. So don't tell me I don't love our kids. So I just say that I agree with pretty what, with what Mr. Evelyn said, let's just delay this for six months, and we'll work with the school board. I think Mr. Nichols appreciates the willingness on our part to work with you guys. And, you know, we'll get through this with God, with God's help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steers.
Ms. Chair, I just need to be, I just want to make everybody very clear. My motion says we'll be working through the next six months. My motion does not say we're waiting till six months, so if the board does not agree with that motion, I just want to be, so the school board and everybody understands what my motion says. It's not saying, I'm not saying we're making a decision in six months, but I said it's an opportunity that does arise, and everything turns around, looks good, we could make that decision within six months. So I just want to be very clear on my motion.
I thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Excuse me, at this time, I also wanted to say, it's not that we will make a motion, we'll vote on a motion, and we'll put everything on the shelf and come back, and then pick it up and start over. I do think that the school board has put a lot of time and energy and, and thought into this, I think that they have worked on it. I think that there are opportunities for both the school board and the board of supervisors to continue to work and hopefully to grow. I am not just for our seniors and not for our kids. I too, I can't tell you I attend every sporting event at the school, but I can tell you I attend events at all of the schools throughout the year. Indeed, I see the need for a school. Absolutely. Indeed, I support our, our students of the school. I was the one that appointed the first students on the local board, so that they have community service, other than having community service for misbehaving, but to have positive community service on their resumes to get into colleges, and all of those students have gone on to college on full ride scholarships, and I think that's a credit to New Kent County Schools and the school board, I mean, the schools, the school board, and the board of supervisors for vision to do such a thing. I'm proud of the fact that the, that we have indeed been saving taxpayers' money for, since 19, I mean, 2014 and before, and it would be my desire that we build this school and then start saving for middle school. So it's not lost in me, I'm not oblivious to our needs, and it is my desire to work with the school board, so that we can move on with the education of our, our young people in our county. At this time, we have a motion on the floor. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
No.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we will move to our budget discussion, and that will be led by County Administrator, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to mainly speak from the top spreadsheet that you have before you, and it's a lot, it's a very busy spreadsheet, so I'm going to walk you through this, which essentially is my recommendation as to how we move forward with the FY21 budget. Starting in the very left-hand column in orange is the proposed budget that I presented to you back in March, with an 82-cent tax rate. At the time, we were projecting revenues of $4,159,717. And as we, we all know, things have, things quickly changed since the presentation of this budget, and definitely our budget retreated, literally changed that day of the, the budget retreat, as we declared emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, staff has had to reevaluate the budget that we previously presented for several reasons. The first reason being, we had to take a very strong look at our projected revenues. As was just stated by you earlier, businesses are closed, businesses are not seeing the same revenues that they once did, and that means that we're seeing, we, we're going to see less tax revenue. We took a look at our real estate revenues, our personal property revenues, sales tax, business license, recordation tax, and mills tax revenues, and we've decided to project a 2% reduction in, in what I previously proposed to you. Now, I know I'll probably get to question that real estate revenue shouldn't change, because that's based on the assessments of January 1, and that is a very true statement. The assessments are not changing, but what we're anticipating with real estate and personal property is that our collection rate will change. Normally, we're around a 98, 97% collection, we usually budget a 97 cent, 97% collection rate, and we've changed that collection rate to 95%. The recordation taxes, that, you know, as less building occurs, which we're seeing that right now in the market, the construction market has slowed. What we've noticed is what was already in the hopper, and those sales that were already, those contracts are already in place, we're seeing that they're moving forward. So our business department, we're out there inspecting construction projects, but the number of new applications coming in has severely declined. In mills tax, I don't think that needs much of an explanation, as we, we know the state of our, our restaurants right now. But with that 2% reduction, that will total $735,277 in reduced revenues to the county. Also, we've had to take a look at, you know, the financial state of our residents here, here in the county. We know that we're seeing the highest unemployment numbers ever, since I've been paying attention to it, around the county, and we get weekly reports on those residents that have filed for unemployment, too, and those applications have sharply increased. The weekly applications were for New Kent County, they were less than 10 back in March, before the COVID pandemic. They're 400 now, and that was 400 last week that they were filed. So we need to take that into account as we look at what households can afford to pay for now. So I've, in speaking with you individually, and doing, speaking with my staff, I'm now proposing that instead of an 82-cent tax rate, that you consider a 79-cent tax rate. This spreadsheet that you have in, before you, gives you various scenarios from a 76 to 82-cent tax rate, but you'll see what's highlighted in the bold blue is the 79-cent tax rate, and I'll focus on this scenario, and I think that will help you understand the other scenarios as, as well. But given the reduction from an 82 to 79-cent tax rate, that is another $931,125 reduction of new revenues that we need, need to find. This budget goes from, as I stated earlier, a revenue projection of $4,159,717 to a revenue And when I say revenue projections, I want to be clear on that, I'm not talking total revenues for the entire county, I'm talking revenues that exceed the revenues that we projected last year, new revenues, projections. So that is a cut of $1,643,575 that staff and I have had to go back into, and look at the budget, and find, how can we make up that, that revenue? In the second block of expenditures that you see, these all relate to the new elementary And these expenditures total $3,536,000. That is the total cost of what it would take to build and operate, build and operate a new elementary school. By looking at the spring pool, and this is something I'd like to discuss with you, by looking at the spring pool, I mean, the fall pool of the VPSA, we've confirmed that we could structure, if we participate in that fall program, we could structure our first payment, that it would, that it would occur in FY22, so therefore, we would have no financial liability for the next fiscal year, if we were to participate in the fall pool of the VPSA. The fall application cycle will be late, late September, early October. The closings we anticipate would occur sometime in November. Now, if we think that there's an opportunity that we could move forward prior to that six-month period, I would recommend that we look at an 80-cent rate, because one of the difference in, on the spreadsheet, between 79 and 80 cents, 80 cents, we feel, is a bare minimum rate that we could assess our residents and still provide funding for the new elementary school. And as you see from the columns, at the 80-cent tax rate, we still have the new elementary school expenditures programmed.
Mr. Hathaway, if we went with bank financing in September or, or October closing, could you still do the 79 cents?
In September, yeah. If, if we waited that period of time, I'm pretty sure, we've structured bank financing out where we wouldn't have to pay a, a year later, so I'm pretty sure we could...
So we could still leave it at 79 cents, and I mean, I do think...
Yeah, if, if we, if we're looking at September, October, I, yeah, but if we're looking at sooner, then we will need to take another look at that 79 cents.
Just because even with the, the bank funding, we could, we could structure it so the payments wouldn't be due until fiscal year '22?
That's what we would put out there. When we put out our RFP for bank financing, we always put our list of requirements, and that's a requirement that we would put out there. Could that have an impact on the rate? It, it may. I doubt it, because I think that's pretty customary, but yes, we, we could. Also, at the 79-cent rate, I am proposing to flat fund the elementary school. So that's $200,000 that was proposed back in March as part of my original budget.
I think you mean flat funding the schools, not the elementary school.
Yes, that, thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I am proposing to flat fund the, the schools, yes, which there would be a $200,000 savings there. The next group of expenditure... The next group of expenditures moves into county expenditures, and really, this is where we've made the lion's share of of our cuts. And I'll just walk us through that. The first item, you have the 12 new positions for the firefighters. That is a, that's a grant that we've received and we've accepted. So we we have very little options there to 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 change that. Now, the majority of that is grant funded. Actual county liability or county funds is $185,000, and that increased by another $185,000 next year and the year after. But I am proposing that that we move forward with the 12 new fire positions. Actually, we've hired the majority of them, if not all, and you may have noticed them training outside, and the training academy is going very well, and I think we lucked out because we, it appears that we've gotten a very good group of of new firefighters. The next item is the sheriff's office. Keep in mind, the sheriff proposed 23 new positions. I recommended six new positions in March. I've changed, well, four new positions and two upgrades of part-time positions. I've changed that recommendation at the 79 cent rate for one new full-time position and two upgrades of two part-time positions. So he will end up with three full-time positions. That's at a cost of $188,000. My original recommendation was $360,000. I had also recommended a decompression, salary decompression program for the sheriff at $70,000. Well, it's a program to deal with the compression of salaries, so we would be decompressing the the sheriff's salaries, which is an issue in in several departments, but the sheriff had put together a very detailed program, one that I intended to use as a model in some of our other departments as as well. That cost was $70,000, and I am proposing that we no longer move forward with that program for next fiscal year at the 79 cent rate. There was an IT position requested, assistant director position. The all-in cost, including the benefits, was $105,000. I'm now now recommending $57,147 for that position, and what that would do is hire the position in January as opposed to July, so we would essentially be paying for half a year of of that salary. The assistant Commonwealth attorney position, that is still in there at a cost of $95,000. Unfortunately, that is a position that it had, was mandated by the General Assembly during the last session of the General Assembly, so we have very little discretion about that position. There is a parks and rec facility maintenance supervisor position, which I am proposing that we move forward with, with the construction of Pine Fork Park, and actually, the grass is growing now. There's going to be a huge need in the next couple of months to start maintaining that facility as well as the other facilities that we have too at our parks. There was an HR part-time position at $21,550. I'm recommending that we not move forward with that position. There was a building inspections, permit technician position. I am recommending that we not move forward with that position. And there were some other personnel actions under the title, which we've called all other personnel actions. You may have, you may remember that we were proposing various upgrades and promotions for county staff. I'm recommending that we no longer move forward with that. The employee benefits, we've, as time has gone, we've gotten some better numbers from our health insurance. So you'll see net increase to employee benefits. You'll see an increase there, and that also includes the action that was taken on Monday night for the board of supervisors to participate in our insurance program. We, under other operating funds, we've made various other cuts, and these are just going through each department line item, line by line. I have proposed 653,000 of additional operational expenditures. We've cut that to $342,931 of additional operating expenditures. And those are the the main increase, but I'd like to go, well, the main decisions that I'm I'm proposing, I'd like to go to the school set aside, which is at the bottom of the column. We are proposing to continue with the annual school set aside for the new elementary school program. That set aside is based on the value of the pin, value of our penny, one penny on the real estate rate. The set aside for next fiscal year would be $2,862,883 of new revenues, of funding that we would set aside for next fiscal year for the new elementary school. And if there is one benefit, and I know we need a new elementary school right now, if there is one bright side to this, this this delay, it is that it will give us additional revenues to put towards the new elementary school. So as we were proposing this year to borrow $26 million, I believe we'll be in a position, if we hold off into the fall pool or hold off several months, that number will be more like $23 million of of borrowing for the new elementary school. And I have a little breakdown on that bottom table on that sheet to let you know, to show you how much cash you've set aside for this project, and it's it's no small number over the course of several years. As you can see, the school set aside account is $8,374,931 of cash that you have available. We had talked about using other one, one-time funding funds because we had originally budgeted on a $35 million project, and when the bids came in higher, we had talked about using additional cash to 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 cover the additional costs. So you have another $2,400,000 in cash available. And then we've also planned to use $4 million of Colonial Downs funds, which we currently have in the bank we've currently collected. So you have, will have, during next fiscal year, you'll have a total amount of $14,774,931 of cash to put towards the the new elementary school. I want to go to the the next sheet in your packet. The next sheet shows the new proposed personnel actions. You can see that number is considerably different. At one point, it was 1.6 million back in March or just about, and now we're looking at 1.2 million. And I won't go over line by line because I've already discussed that on the previous sheet, but this is just a more detailed breakdown by position of the changes that that we're proposing. Also want to bring to your attention, and I think, you know, it it doesn't impact this year's budget, but I just think we have to recognize some of our other obligations that will impact us in FY '22. And that is the third and final sheet that that you have. The first is Harris Maintenance Contract, and I I thank our sheriff and our Fire and Rescue Department by nego, for negotiating another year warranty with Harris because this cost could have been impacting us next fiscal year, FY '21. But fortunately, they got Harris to agree to extend their warranty, so we won't see that expenditure, $258,000, until FY '22. Also, there will be an additional $185,000 required for the SAFER grant in FY '22. Each year, our contribution increases by $185,000, I believe until year four, Larry, and then we pay the entire amount. Inmate housing, we have a very efficient and effective sheriff's department, and because of that, we're seeing our jail costs increase each year. And it's not just because of that, but, and you're efficient and effective, but during the past two years, Henrico County has raised our per diem rate as well, and that that's been a big factor as well. I believe we've went from, at one time, it was about $20. You probably know the exact-
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And now, and now we're 48, 48. So our per diem rate has increased, and we have locked up more people too, so. And 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 honestly, that that is a number that that concerns me a little bit because when you have troubled economies and people out, people out of work, I think we tend to see that that number rise a little bit, so. And then the last item too is, I don't know, it's it's kind of a pet peeve of mine, and this deals with the Chromebooks. When we originally moved forward with the purchase of the Chromebooks to issue to our middle school and high school and elementary school students too, they just don't take them home, that cost was $300,000, and that was a big impact on our operating budget. So what we did is we paid that $300,000 the first year all out of our capital fund where we had a little more flexibility. And the goal was, each year, we would decrease that capital expenditure by 100,000 and increase the operating expenditure by 100,000 until it was all paid by operating expenditures. This is an ongoing cost. It really should be an operating cost. So just to let you know, we do need to continue that 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 practice. So just with the numbers, with those items I've shared with you, that's $743,000 of of new, new expenditures for the FY '22 budget. Just something to keep in mind, when we do budgets, we're always looking five years out as to what's coming, and just wanted to bring those those to your attention. Are there any questions on the proposed 79 cent rate? And I I want to share, going back to that first page, I want to go a little further down to that column, to the end. I had mentioned, in our budget retreat, we had discussed that there was going to be some additional revenues from our commissioner revenues office, dealing with the the reassessments. Each reassessment cycle, our commissioner revenue creates a contingency budget for appeals. You know, there's an appeal period after you receive your assessments where you can come in, schedule a time with the commissioner, and the commissioner can make adjustments to 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 the appeal, to the assessment. So there's always a contingency set aside. Back at our budget retreat, we had projected that that contingency would be about $240,000. And we had proposed using that funds for a 2% salary increase for all county employees. I'm now proposing not to move forward with the salary increase for all county employees to help us get to that 79 cent rate. But I do have some good news too. That $240,000 that we had originally projected, we got numbers from our commissioner revenue yesterday afternoon. That number is actually $309,000. So luckily, we have more revenue there than than we anticipate, and that will help us also get to that 79 cent tax rate. Also, I am proposing to increase the set aside for the elementary school to $3,171,931. So I'm proposing that we increase our annual set aside to the new elementary school. And if we do that, and the reason I'm proposing to do that is to decrease the amount that of revenue or the amount of revenue that we would have to make up in the FY '22 fiscal year for the new elementary school. I started the, I started my conversation off with the total cost that it took to fund and operate the new elementary school of $3,536,000. With the proposed set aside here, we will be $673,000 short of of that amount. So that's another expenditure that we'll need to look at in FY '22.
Madam Chair, one question I have is the, you cut about $340,000 from operating?
Yes.
Have department heads, have you, have they been made aware of what those cuts were and what, what they're, what they are, were there anything major?
My, my, my department heads, why, I don't feel that there's been anything major. My department heads have been put on notice since we've started reevaluating the budget that we are looking at making cuts to their operating budgets. And I've not sat down with each department head yet and gone over every single cut or what I've proposed. But once I feel that the board is comfortable with the 79 cent rate and this is the route that we'll go, then definitely we'll sit down with the board. Now, with my budget process though, I sit down with all department heads when we develop the budget, because I ask our department heads to develop their budget requests for the next fiscal year, and we schedule meetings with each department head so I can understand what they're requesting and understand the need for their request. So I have met with department heads to consider their original request, but for the proposed cuts, no, I have not met with department heads yet on that.
Are there any more questions of Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Hathaway, on, under the item, all other personnel actions, you said that that line item was eliminated, but it looks like it was just cut. Is, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, actually, that that's correct. We've cut that pretty much in in half. What we did eliminate is, and actually, what, there there were various salary promotions. And Larry, jump in if if that's the correct one for all other personnel actions.
It would be everything from the $11,173 down.
And that's on the second sheet that you have.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And there were several promotions there that, even though I think that they're very warranted, and that's why they were originally recommended, dealing with the state of the economy right now, I feel that that's something that would- Dealing with the state of the economy right now, I feel that that's something that we'll need to hold off on.
Are there any more questions or discussion about?
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Steers.
At our March thirteenth Board of Supervisors Retreat, I requested Rodney to look into the possibility of hiring, the county hiring two full-time employees who would work through the refuse department and actually do nothing but pick up trash in our county. I think everybody in this room sees how trashy our streets are. I don't give if it's the main roads, the back roads. A year ago, we all got together and had a one-day countywide trash pickup, and the county looked pretty good for about a week or so. And the sheriff does all he can do to get inmates to come out and pick up the trash, but he cannot force them to, and VDOT doesn't seem to stay on top of. So Rodney's got gotten some figures to hire two full-time employees and what the total cost would be. And I think some of the cost he has in here, the orange trash bags would probably, I could probably get VDOT to donate that, and he's getting about three-thousand dollars for bags. Also, safety cones, safety vests, coolers, boots, protective clothing, collection tools, about four thousand on that. I'm sure some of that could be cut if we could get VDOT to donate the cones and safety vests and the collection tools. Anyway. He has a projected cost here of one-hundred-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars for the year. Also, that's with the county hiring two individuals. Also, there is a contractor that actually contracts with different counties picking up trash on the roads. And it's so much per mile. Actually, a hundred-and-fifty dollars per mile. And Rodney's listed about nineteen major roads in the county. Everything from airport, tonsil, Cooks Mill, Dispatch, Good Hope, New Kent Highway, Pine Fork, Pocahontas Trail, Route one-fifty-five, Stage Road, Waterside. So to sub that out to this contractor would run about sixty-nine-thousand-thirty dollars a year. So I guess, but you're looking for some direction on which way we should go with this, to have it in the budget or not?
This cost is currently not in the budget numbers that we just went over. So we did talk about it at the budget retreat. And I was asked to prepare some numbers for you, and I've I've done that. And if you want us to move in that direction, then we would have to put that in in into the budget.
Turn your mic on, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think this is something I would love to see us able to do, but I think it's a luxury that we can't afford right now. I spent the last two days picking up trash on my road. VDOT gave me the bags, and I think we got, a whole lot of people got nothing better to do in the county. Maybe we could get some volunteers to pick up trash. As much as I would love for us to do this, I think it's a luxury we can't afford right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Mr. Evelyn?
Mr. Hathaway, I see the contract here is, that's from ten years ago?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Oh, okay. Is this just one contract, or I mean, did you put it out, I mean, how'd you come up with this contract price?
Sure. To come up with those prices, honestly, I just spoke with one contractor that I knew and that I knew did this type of work for VDOT and directly for localities. And basically, the price that he worked up for me was a hundred-and-fifty per mile, per two-lane road, a hundred-and-eighty for four-lane roads, or roads that had a median, where you had to pick up trash within the median, too. You'll see that those roads are a hundred-and-eighty dollars per mile.
I I indeed I indeed agree that we want to keep New Kent beautiful. I think that, however, I think that that becomes a part of responsibility of all of us in New Kent. Like Mr. Lockwood, I probably didn't walk as many miles as he did to pick up trash. But I am constantly, as a matter of fact, I have one of those rippers in my car and a trash bag. And I know on some of the localities, I mean, some of my, throughout my district, i.e. on Pine Fork Road and up through the vineyards, even parts of Stage Road, have just called some of the neighbors, and we've gotten out and picked up trash already this year. So I think in lieu of some of our ma- I I call them major, major personnel cuts that we've made already, I think that this is, I'm not going to call it a luxury. However, I am going to call it positions that I feel like we need to hold until we do see how our numbers will come in for this budget year. I think we can go forward with our motions of encouraging our our community. And I, Mr. Lockwood and Mr. Steers did a great job of that last year, of getting everybody excited about picking up trash. And maybe we could, I know you are. And getting the community out to to help clean and keep our home. This is our home, keep our home clean. I know the New Kent Clean Committee is working on recycling events. And if no more than for this fiscal year, I think that that's something that we need to consider putting a hold on.
If I may, Mr. Madam Chair, just one more thing, if anybody needs bags or gloves, please feel free to contact me. I have plenty of both, and I'll be glad to deliver.
Well, we have complete kits downstairs in our environmental apartment as well that we sign up, so.
Madam Chair, I would agree with with Mr. Steers. I mean, it's a, I probably get more calls about trash than anything else over the year. So I would like to see Mr. Hathaway maybe look into some more contract prices because it looks, maybe after everything calms down in the next three or four months, I would suggest keep on working on it and getting some different contract prices. Because to me, that probably looks like the way we'd want to go. I would, instead of hiring some full-time personnel, get it done three or four times a year, so. I think it's a great idea, and like I said, I get more calls about trash than anything. So I think we we need to keep it on our radar, but I I agree with Mr. Lockwood right now, probably not the time to put it in our budget.
Okay. If I can move on to the the next item, I've handed out another sheet, which is what will be advertised at your March meeting for Water and Sewer, May meeting, for May regular meeting, too, for the Water and Sewer fees. As I mentioned, on Monday night, we hadn't done the calculations to get those into the advertisement for Monday night's meeting. But we are proposing a one percent reduction in rates. And I just wanted you to see the calculation and what that looks like before it goes to advertisement. We are proposing some fee increases, and those are highlighted in red. And from speaking with the utility department, those increases are based on our actual costs to provide that particular equipment and service.
So we are going to reduce by one percent. And then we're going to do a fee increase. Is that the, is that the proposal?
That is, that is what's being proposed. And the majority of those fees are are the meter fees. We buy the meters and install them. And I guess Larry can talk about how we're losing money on that, or?
The the bigger meters are basically the commercial outfits. We've gone to what's called a compound meter, which registers the low flows and the high flows. Normal meters, which were the original price, were just covering the high flows. So with so much water-saving devices now, you're, we're losing revenues and also track of water by the low flows that are passing through the meters without registering. So we've we've gone, since then, anything over an inch, inch and a half and higher, we buy a compound meter. And these are the actual costs to the county. So by doing this, we're putting the cost onto the developer or the new business, not the citizens. Right now, the citizens are picking up that cost within our budget, and we're just trying to pass that cost on to those who are incurring.
So this is not increasing water and sewer rates at all? This is increasing covering the cost for the meters, the way I'm reading this, it's insulation and covering the costs of?
All this is, we're covering the cost for, you know, the construction for an irrigation meter. It's been that since I've been here, and I've been here over twelve years. And our costs have gone up yet, we're still doing that. And this is for the individual who wants it, if they want to pay that big D, then they pay our cost to get it to put in. And the same thing with the other things, the plan review, the GIS fees. These are what we pay contractors of some of this stuff to do for us. Their prices have gone up since, and these have been been the same since two thousand eight when I came here. So it's not gone up at all, and now we're asking for to cover these costs that are going up.
And the last item I'd like to talk about is just schedule. We are currently actually on track with our original schedule. If we're comfortable with advertising a seventy-nine cent rate. Well, we've already advertised an eighty-two cent rate, so we don't have to do another public hearing on that. But we do need to advertise the budget. And that advertisement, right now, I'm recommending that we advertise the budget based on the seventy-nine cent rate, which would go to public hearing at your May regular meeting. And action would be taken on the budget at your May work session. I believe that's May twenty-seventh. It appears if we're okay with this budget, or at least going to public hearing with what's been proposed right now, that it appears that we can ma- meet that schedule.
Madam Chair, in during this time, citizens can, could you, could you let citizens know how, if they have some questions or concern about the budget, how they could get their questions into us through Ms. Zucchi or whoever is handling handling that?
Yes, thank you, thank you. And actually, we do need to revise the budget document that was distributed to you. We will place that online, so the residents can see that. And as far as comments, definitely, please, we encourage the residents to to review the budget and send comments to the administration office. Nine-six-six-nine-six-eight-three is the main number into the administration office. My email address is on our website, RA Hathaway at newkent-v-a.us. So please call us and email us your comments. And on the public hearing notice, too, for the budget, the contact information will be listed there. And we'll be allowing residents to submit written comments up until five PM on the day of of that that meeting. And really, we love public participation, and I'm loving the numbers that we're seeing on Facebook that have been following us on our our meetings. And we understand the the reluctance to come out and be in public gatherings at this time. We do plan to continue to host that May meeting on Facebook Live, and it'll be available on YouTube also for people to see and watch the meeting from their home.
They don't have much to watch, if, you know, they're watching us, but there's no sports or anything else on TV now, so I guess they got to pick something to watch.
So what do you need from us, Ms. Hathaway?
I guess just no motion at this period. But if everyone's in agreement that we can go to public hearing with the proposed seventy-nine cent tax rate budget in May, we'll move forward as so. Okay? Thank you.
I just wanted to take a moment to to thank Mr. Hathaway, Justin, who's, you know, Justin, there he is. Mr. Clark and Rebecca. We we started on this, wow, it looked almost like a year ago, but just working diligently and and then with the changes, never felt so good to walk out of a a March retreat thinking that we can do this and then have our worlds turned upside down. I I thank you especially for putting up with me, coming back with my book re-lined and highlighted and all of that. And to each of our Board of Supervisors that absolutely have done their due diligence in seeing where we could cut to make make this budget. And so I want you, everyone to know that your deeds have not gone unappreciative, unappreciated. So at this time, do we have any other, any other comments or discussion before adjournment? Okay, our next meeting scheduled is for our next regularly scheduled meeting. The Board of Supervisors will be held at six o'clock PM on Monday, May the eleventh, two thousand and twenty. And our next work session will be at nine AM on Wednesday, April twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty. Both will be held here in the boardroom of the Administration Building. Can we have a motion for adjournment, please? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
One moment, please.
I apologize. Our agenda is very light for the April work session. And as we're still encouraging people to stay home and not travel, I would recommend that we not have an April work session meeting. Any items that come up, and there's very few, could be put on our May regular meeting agenda, if that's the will of the board.
Any objection to not having a work session? Wow, that was the easiest thing we passed today. One more comment, too, I I wanted to make, with everything that's gone on, the board, our Board of Supervisors absolutely want to extend to the Wood and Evelyn family our condolences on the passing of Mr. Eddie Wood. Please know that you are indeed in our prayers as you go through your time of bereavement. And please pass this on to Ms. Carey as well, sir. Ms. Watkins, will you, oh, what, Mr. Hathaway is on a roll today.
No, no, I'm sorry. I I would ask that we amend the adjournment motion to include that our April work session will be canceled.
Okay. So our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on Monday, May the eleventh, two thousand and twenty. We will not have a work session at nine o'clock on Wednesday, April the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. Our regular meeting will be held here in the boardroom of the New Kent County Administration Building. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. We thank you all for your time and your patience with us today, and be safe.